Procedure by law and item nine point three point six governance options. And if that could be in the agenda between items five and six. And I'd like to add one more agenda if I could. Item nine point four, the Aqua Terra Board Appointments.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Tool. So, so the effect of all that would be to move two items, twelve point one and nine point three point six to come immediately after delegations. So we can do that. And then to add that additional item at the end of the agenda is nine point four.
That's correct.
Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. As long as it isn't the subject matter of a public hearing, which we're going to get to a little bit later on in our agenda. So at this time, we always call and ask, is there anybody that'd like to come forward and address council on any community-related matter? I see in the audience, we have a number of delegations, or sorry, a number of residents from GPRC. So welcome to the students who are here watching council. But I did see one person signal that they wanted to come forward and speak to an item. So if you'd like to come forward, sir, come up to the presenter's table. You can just introduce yourself and for the benefit of our recording secretary and welcome.
Thank you. Evening. My name is Delvin Kosick. I'm with Internet Concepts Limited. And for full disclosure, I have a significant financial interest in a number of signs in Grand Prairie. I just want to speak to the potential amendment to the signage by law. That's up for discussion today. If it's okay with you, I'll just read from my notes. That way I can stay on topic and get through it in a timely manner. The City of Grand Prairie should take a hard look at the proposed amendments to the sign by law. I feel the amendments are prejudicial in the sense that they are intentionally written so that only a single organization qualifies. If the City of Grand Prairie feels that signs on public property are a benefit to the community at large, then it is only fair and reasonable to expect the city to either embark on installing and managing the signs at a municipal level or tender the opportunity for both nonprofit and private organizations to step up and meet this community need. I see this opportunity no differently than the bus bench advertising or transit advertising where the city tenders the day-to-day operations out and still receives an economic benefit in the end. I feel the hard-working taxpayers of our community, in this case, are getting a raw deal in the sense that the Chamber of Commerce is able to extract an economic benefit for its own cause while the average person in our community will see little to no benefit. In addition, the City of Grand Prairie receives no compensation for this public handout and the Chamber of Commerce will not pay any taxes on the revenue it generates. As a taxpayer, why should I subsidize a nonprofit organization that is already well-funded by its own membership and for its own benefit? It's been pointed out that signs will provide for amber alerts and community notices. Yet at the end of the day, it's clearly been mandated by the chamber who will own the sign that it intends to generate revenue for the benefit of the Chamber of Commerce first and foremost. There's nothing in the bylaws that establishes any guidelines for this potential benefit to the community and in all likelihood won't materialize once the cash starts flowing. In the history of Grand Prairie, how many amber alerts have we had? And in the world we live in today, social media far outpaces the speed of which this kind of communication reaches the population. By allowing this amendment to pass, the city is opening Pandora's Box by endorsing a nonprofit organization to directly compete with private industry. This is not the role of government. If the Chamber of Commerce wants to embark on setting up signs for their own benefit, then they should be held to the same standards as anyone else and not be given a public handout. I don't think anyone can justify a reason why the chamber is incapable of doing it without the city changing the rules just for them. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Kosick. Any questions for the delegation? This is referencing an item that's here for third reading later on in our agenda. I recognize that you've made presentations to committee before and so my council may have had an opportunity to answer questions. I don't see anybody ringing in with questions. So, Mr. Kosick.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wish to come forward to address council? We do have this opportunity every two weeks at a regular city council meetings. And so we try to ensure that anybody in the community that wants to raise an issue with council has this opportunity. Seeing nobody else coming forward, then I'll close our delegation portion of our agenda. And we'll move on to those items that were switched around in our agenda. To twelve point one, the procedure by law. And we're looking for second and third reading after that notice of motion. Counselor Rice.
I move second reading of bylaw C nine six two S being an amendment to the procedure by law to allow telephone voting on specific items.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. And that motion obviously is for second reading. Counselor McLean?
Hey, just a quick question and I think I know the answer. This won't be for like the whole councils. Could be to one item. Very rare time.
Counselor McLean, that's correct. If you look at the by law, it's very specific that council members would have to specifically request to participate in one individual item. And it isn't for a blanket ability to participate in the entire council. From council's information, there has been a request from two council members that are waiting to participate in items later on in our agenda should this motion pass. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Second reading? That motion carries. Counselor Rice? So Counselor Rice moves third and final reading of that procedure by law amendment. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. That by law amendment has passed. And as I said, there has been a request from two council members to participate in tonight's council meeting specifically for item nine point three point six. So I'll just check now to see, before we move on to that item, I'll just check with our two council members. Counselor Clayton, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Counselor Thiessen, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thanks. So the, that part works at least. That's good. We'll see how the rest goes. Just for council's information and the public's information, if and when we get to voting, the procedure by law lays out that the council members here in the council meeting will vote first electronically. And then before the votes are revealed, we'll ask the council members that are participating online or by phone to vote verbally. So council members, everybody's under that same understanding. Then we'll move to nine point three point six. And I'll ask Mr. City Manager to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mayor Given. In council strategic plan twenty fifteen to eighteen, council identified as a strategic direction that we explore alternative governance models. At last week's Corporate Services Committee meeting, I presented a request for direction report to the committee seeking some guidance in which direction we want to move. The committee felt that this item was of such importance that it should be discussed by all council at an open council meeting and hence it came forward to this meeting tonight.
Thanks very much, Mr. Sherback. Business arising from the introduction of that report? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Given Mr. City Manager's report, I would move that council, in accordance with section one oh two of the Municipal Government Act, initiate amalgamation proceedings with the Village of Heith, the Town of Beaver Lodge, the Town of Wembley, the County of Grand Prairie, and the Town of Sexmouth. And further, provide written notification of the proposed amalgamation to Village of Heith, the Town of Beaver Lodge, the Town of Wembley, the County of Grand Prairie, and the Town of Sexmouth, Minister of Municipal Affairs, and the appropriate, appropriate local authorities that will be affected by the proposed amalgamation. A quick introduction or context for this motion this evening. First of all, this motion is consistent with the direction in council strategic plan adopted nearly two fourteen of exploring alternate governance models and options. It builds upon the work of council over the past year, including the governance symposium held last September. It gives the opportunity to initiate a meaningful conversation among all the stakeholders on what would be the best for the future of our region. And it is the start of a process. Meaningful dialogue over a number of months without a determination of an outcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. So with that motion on the floor, we're open for discussion, debate? Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion. I think, you know, we just recently celebrated our hundredth anniversary. And throughout the history of Grand Prairie and in the region, I think municipalities have changed. And I think there's been a number of things that have evolved over the years. And I think that our governance model should be evolving with them. And so I'm open to having this conversation with our regional partners and seeing, you know, if this is an avenue that we would want to explore. And seeing their thoughts. And I look forward to lots of community consultation and engagement with them.
Thanks, Counselor Terrence. Counselor McLean?
I just wasn't sure when Counselor Adburn was reading there, towns and that. Did we mention that we can send a letter and be green view at all or was that in there as well?
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Clayton, would you like to add anything? I'll just, I can't see your hand from where you are. So I just thought I'd give the opportunity if you had anything to add.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be speaking in favor of this motion. As Counselor Terrence pointed out, I look forward to the discussion going forward with, with all of the noted communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Thiessen, anything to add?
No, I too will be supporting this motion as well as I think if just the conversation within our community can only do benefit to our entire region. So I will be supporting this measure.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Council members that are here in the room, any other discussion or debate? Counselor McLean?
I know it's not there yet, but I would love to see an M.D. Greenview as well in the listing of sending a letter to.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. I'll just interject to say that I'll also be supporting the motion. I believe this is an extension of the good working relationship that we have with our neighboring municipalities. We have a good foundation of relations and agreements that can be complex at times. I've certainly heard that expressed to me and council's heard that expressed to us by residents. And so I think this gives us an opportunity to engage those same residents in seeking something that might work better for our region. So I certainly am supportive. I don't see anybody else ringing in, so I will call for the council members here in attendance to vote on their voting pads at the council table. Does vote now? Looking for one more vote from folks in attendance. Okay, I've got them all. Okay, and so I will ask first, Counselor Clayton, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Thiessen, how do you vote?
I too vote in favor of the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. So I'll end the vote. And that motion would pass unanimously. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen and Counselor Clayton for dialing in. This was the one agenda item you'd asked to participate in. And thanks for taking time off from your separate destinations in California to participate in our council meetings tonight. I didn't want to suggest that you're both there in California together because I know you're not. Thanks very much. And we'll move on with the, we can, we can end the, we can end the electronic portion of the meeting. And we'll move on to our public hearings with item six point one. Just for those in attendance, we may hear a beep as the council members exit off of the telephone. So move on to six point one. I call to order the public hearing for bylaw C eleven oh six dash four, the Northwest Area Structure Plan Amendment, and bylaw C ten twenty eight D, the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan Amendment. And I'd look to administration for an introduction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are recommending that council give second and third reading to bylaw C eleven oh six dash zero four and second and third reading to bylaw C twelve twenty eight D as amended. And the amendments would be to maps eight, nine, and eleven, which slightly changes the green space adjacent to the creek as per the Musquesee Park Master Plan. When the province chose the Grand Prairie Regional College land west of one hundred and eighth street as the site for the new hospital, it identified the need for a new access onto one hundred and eighth street. That access was not included in any, in any transportation master plans or any area structure plans. And therefore, it created or create some challenges to the city. On August twenty, twenty twelve, council adopted amendments to the Northwest Area Structure Plan and the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan to remove the road network until such time as a new network could be, could be adopted. At the November third, twenty fourteen council meeting, council approved a motion by Councilman McLean or Counselor McLean that it adopt the Northwest Road Network Study and direct administration to amend the Northwest Area Structure Plan to reflect the road network recommendations from the study. And we took that motion to mean the changing the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan back as well. And the, the map here, this is, this is the road network that council adopted in, in twenty fourteen. Council is required to hold a public hearing before adopting amendments to statutory plans. And the advertising of those has been undertaken as required. As a strategic implication, adoption of a new road network for the area will enhance the efficient movement of traffic in the area, including around the hospital, which is obviously a regional importance and, you know, concerned to everybody in the community that the traffic around the hospital basically flow smoothly. The amendment to the area structure plan necessitated a little bit of change to the land uses. Not sure if you can see the cursor on this thing here. But down here in this little area here where the B is, the land uses generally follow the roads. And when the roads moved, the, the land use blobs had to, had to be amended slightly to accommodate that. Our intention was to change things as little as possible with the, with the expectation that the landowners in this area are going to come forward and make their own proposed changes later on. The other change is in, is actually on the college land. Again, because of the change in the road network, the area surrounding the hospital and the college, some of those land uses had to be tweaked slightly a little bit. I did have a conversation with the, with the college folks. They were requesting actually that more of the land be identified for commercial expansion. But my intention again was to limit the amount of land use changes to the smallest extent possible. The other change that is actually to the flood plain map in the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan. The original area structure plan was, was based on, or the flood map in the original area structure plan was based on a nineteen ninety eight study. In two thousand and seven, Northwest Hydraulics prepared a study for Alberta Environment. They mapped the entire Bear Creek Corridor and provided floodway and flood fringe mapping. And what we've done here is we've changed the flood plain map in the Hidden Valley ASP to reflect the floodway and the flood fringe that Alberta Environment recognizes as, as the flood plain for the, for the Bear Creek Corridor in this area of the city. The other little bit here, and again, this goes to the amendment to the by law here, the green space. We've, we've tweaked the green space a little bit to reflect, A, negotiations that we, that had happened with the developer several years ago. And also a little bit with the, the new lines that are in the Musquesee Park Master Plan that was recently adopted. So in conclusion, the amendments are in accordance with the requirements of the act. Engineering took, undertook extensive public consultation in consultation with the landowners in this area when the Northwest Road Network was developed. And therefore, we're recommending that council give these by laws second and third reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Questions for administration at this time? Counselor Rice?
If you go back a couple maps, Mr. Welton, there's one, there, the one that says B. It seems to reads to me as industrial. That doesn't seem to fit in that area.
Through the mayor, the, the original, this, this rep, this represents very close to the origin, what the area structure plan currently shows. And it does actually show some light industrial back there based on the location of the hospital going where it's going. Our expectation is, is that's probably not a viable place for business industrial anymore. And it's our expectation that when the landowners come forward with changes to this, that there will not be business industrial in this area.
Somebody could come in tomorrow and do it. We couldn't stop them.
Well, through the mayor, the, the next step in the process would be an outline plan amendment. And there is, you know, and so there's a long consultation process. There would also be land use by law amendments. If at any stage council did not feel comfortable with business industrial there or industrial there in general, they could certainly, it is council's prerogative to reject industrial there in the future.
When would council's options expire?
A council's options would expire if and when it adopted an outline plan and a land use by law amendment. Mr. Rice?
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Welton. Any other questions for administration at this time? We'll have another opportunity, counsel, if you have questions that arise. So I'd open the public hearing to presentations or submissions. So I'd ask if there's anyone in attendance that wanted to speak in favor or in support of the recommended changes. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or in support of the recommended changes to these two area structure plans? I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there anyone who is here to speak in opposition or against the two proposed changes? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? I'll ask one last time. Is there anybody that's here from the public to speak to the proposed changes to the Northwest Area Structure Plan and the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan? Again, I don't see anybody raising their hands or coming forward. So I'll just ask if council had any further questions for administration? And if there's not, then I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would like to move second reading of bylaw C one one zero six dash zero four.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on eleven oh six dash four, which is the Northwest Area Structure Plan? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just look forward to moving forward. I remember moving here in ninety one when we had twenty seven thousand and the field was empty where Westgate was. And I believe this area will fill up faster than the last twenty years. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on second reading? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan? You just have to turn on your microphone. It went off.
Move third reading of bylaw C one one zero six zero four.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on third reading of that same area structure plan amendment? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Counselor Logan, we've got the second part of those two.
Thank you. I'd move second reading of bylaw C one zero two eight D as amended.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So this, of course, is the Hidden Valley Area Structure Plan amendments. Any discussion or debate on those amendments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move third reading of bylaw C one zero two eight D as amended.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Counsel, I think everybody's in. That motion carries as well. That handles all of our public hearing business. We move on to our unfinished business and item seven point one. Privately owned signs on public property by law C ten seventy eight C amendments. This is looking for a third reading. I believe this relates to the signs on public, sorry, private signs on public property as referenced in by our delegation. Have a motion for third reading? Counselor Adburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give third reading to bylaw C dash one zero seven eight. C being amendment to the use of public lands by law.
Thanks very much, Counselor Adburn. Open for discussion, debate on that motion? Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I would like to ask council to defeat this motion. I think it was this by law amendment. I think it's a move we're taking in error. No matter how much we say right now that there will be the one example of this happening with private signs going up on public lands. Once we have the first one, we will have pressure for more. And who's to say that this council next year or the next council or the council after that decide, oh yeah, we'll make this exception and this exception. And the signs will proliferate in our public green spaces. I think this is a wrong move. And I believe the best way to stop it is to defeat third reading of this by law.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll echo Counselor Logan's concerns. I will not be voting in favor of this by law. For me, the main opposition is the, the article in there where it talks about just allowing those organizations that are incorporated under the Board of Trades, so meaning the Chamber of Commerce. I, I think that there's times when city council would want to have a sign on public land for a greater public good, whether that be an entrance sign or a public information bulletin board. And I think that we can engage people like the Chamber of Commerce. But I think there's other partners that we'd want to bring into the mix as well. The delegation that was here earlier mentioned that, you know, that you could go to a tendering process. And there's a number of different ways that council could do it. And I think by limiting ourselves just to one organization within, within the city is not a good practice. And frankly, I think it's unjust and not fair to other organizations that should have equal opportunity should council proceed with, with wanting one of these signs. So I would also encourage and ask that council would defeat this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Terrence. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Also, I had, number one, is citizens phoning me directly on this at home. And I'll be voting on that as well. But also, I brought up many times about the City of St. Albert and how they do their entrance signs. And, and I don't like how one organization, I would like to see others to be involved as well.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Tool?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This has been up in discussion for a great time. We've had some good discussion from both sides. But I feel at this point in time, I am going to be voting in favor. Once again, if the next council comes in and they want to change it, then there's that ability too, just like we are changing the bylaw today, maybe, possibly. And, so, I've got to say on that, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Tool. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does carry, four to three, so we move on to item 7.2. Bylaw C-1226B, animals and responsible pet ownership amendment. This is also here for third and final reading. If I can get a motion for third and final reading? Counselor Tool?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given, I move the council give third reading to bylaw C-1226B, being an amendment to the animal and responsible pet ownership bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tool. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Rice?
We should iterate what it, what it encompasses.
Sure, sure. Director Galante, would you like to give a little bit of a highlight of what the amendments to the responsible pet ownership bylaw are?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council may recall, this amendment is proposing an exemption to the current limit of animals, that is four, in this particular case. So there is a process outlining here considering minor or major exemptions. So the Enforcement Services Department will review the application, will make an initial determination, and the exemption, if the bylaw passes, will allow the Community Safety Director to issue a permit, instead of amending the bylaw because of different number of animals that may be required as a minimum. So we will maintain the four animals as a minimum, but the Community Safety Director will be, will have the authority to issue exemptions, based, based on minor or major requirements from different associations. As council may recall, in the past, members of different clubs, for example, the Pigeons Club have been here, as well as some people requiring urban bees. So these two examples will, will be considered as well, and this is basically, in a nutshell, the nature of the amendment.
Thanks very much, Director Galante. Counselor Rice?
So, the director would get a chance to make an exemption. Obviously, no one's going to breed four bees, so that would be one where you would be, but quite frankly, it's council that's going to get the calls from the neighbors. So is there a disconnect there?
Mayor Given, if the initial assessment from the Enforcement Services Department deems the application as major amendment or major permit, there would be consultation with the neighbors. So we're going to consult with stakeholders potentially being affected because of this exemption. So after that, we will meet with the applicant, will consider the input received from the neighbors, and will be able to take a determination.
Is, is that in the bylaw as a requirement, the consultation phrase?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Tool?
Yes, thanks for, Mayor Given, I'd just like to ask, Mr. Galante, is there going to be site visits to possible applications, applicants?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct. Depending the magnitude of the application, site visits and consultation with the neighbors will be part of the process.
Thanks, Counselor Tool. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Question for Director Galante. During the committee meeting, it was mentioned that, as Counselor Rice alluded to, that honeybees could be included within this exemption, being that they're, you're going to have more than four honeybeans, bees, and so if this bylaw passes, would that affect, would this take place right away, and could people apply for an exemption if, should they want to have honeybees for the summer? Director Galante?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is correct, Counselor Terrence.
Thank you. Thanks very much, thanks for the questions. Any further discussion or debate on this bylaw amendment? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. The two opposed, and we move on to item 8.1, Strategic Priorities Chart, April to June 2015. The chart was provided as part of our council package. It's a regular piece of business, if somebody would care to make a motion to adopt the chart as presented, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move council approve the strategic priorities chart for the term April to June 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the strategic priorities chart as presented? Just an update of the work that council is doing and our priorities for the organization. Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we move to item 8.2. Counselor Rice, did you have something on? No, okay. We'll move to item 8.2, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-32. I'll look to administrate, sorry, I'll look for a first reading. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, I would move that we give bylaw C-1260-32, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, get first reading.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan, so I'll call for the vote on first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Just ask for a brief introduction from administration. Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So bylaw amendment C-1260-32 is an application to rezone two properties within the city from general residential to residential transition in order to accommodate multi-attached dwellings. Administration recommends that the public hearing be held on May 4th, 2015, at 6:30 in council chambers. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Look for a motion for date, time, and location, Counselor Logan.
Sure, I'd move that we have Monday, May 4th, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers be the date, time, and location for the public hearing on this issue.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the date, time, and location as proposed? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We have another land use bylaw amendment, and council, apologies, administration will ask for their introduction first this time before we do first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So land use bylaw amendment C-1260-29 is an application to amend direct control District Nine in order to accommodate an outdoor storage yard as an accessory to an automotive repair shop.
Thank you.
Oh, and we move that, recommend that the hearing be held on May 4th.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for first reading? Counselor McLean?
Mayor Given, I move the bylaw C-1260-29, being amendment to land use bylaw, begin first reading.
Thank you. So I'll call for the vote on first reading, there's no discussion or debate on that first reading? Thank you. And date, time, and location, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move that Monday, May 4th, 2015, at 6:30 PM in city council chambers be established as a date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean, I'm sorry, can you just confirm which day in May you said?
I think I said the 4th, but am I wrong?
Let's just confirm that date, because in our agenda package, the win-
It says 48.
So you could pick the 4th, or you could pick the 8th, but we can't have the 48th. So we're sure that the 4th is the Monday? Thanks very much, Counselor McLean, so the 4th it is. Any discussion or debate as to date, time, and location as proposed? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. Taking us to item 8.4, the land use bylaw amendment, C-1260-34, to fix a typographical error. Do you have an introduction for us as well, Mr. Drosh?
Thank you, Mayor Given, so yes, land use bylaw amendment C-1260-34 is to fix a typographical error. So the bylaw wording contained typographical error, it indicated the, that the property was in the northeast quarter section, when in reality, it's in the northwest quarter section. Now, the mapping in the bylaw was correct, so the resulting amendment to the land use bylaw map was correct, the proper property was rezoned, however, in our record, it indicates the wrong description of the property, and so this amendment is to remediate that error. Now, according to the Municipal Government Act, we are able to amend the bylaw without holding a public hearing if it is to fix an error of this nature, so these types of errors include clerical, technical, grammatical, or typographical errors that do not materially change the bylaw. Also, we are able to give all three readings to the amendment in one evening if second reading is unanimous among council. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that clarification of process as well, it's helpful. Look for a motion on first reading, Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move that first reading be given to bylaw C-1260-34, being an amendment to resolve a typographical error in the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Redburn, I'll call for the vote on that first reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, I'd move that second reading be given to bylaw C-1260-34.
Okay, thanks very much, open for discussion or debate. To say that as administration pointed out, we could do all third, all three readings if this reading passes unanimously. We heard that the content of the amendment is just to fix that typographical error, and so that should be okay. I'd encourage council members to vote in support, so we can get that tidied up. I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, just a point of clarification, Mayor Given, so we don't have to have a motion to have third reading, we can just go ahead with third reading?
That's what I heard from administration, I'll look to see if anybody's going to contradict that. Typically, we do have a motion to have third reading in the same night, so Counselor Redburn, let's, let's keep with that. Yeah.
Good. I'd move that we have, have third reading of bylaw C-1260-34.
Okay, thanks very much. So this is a motion that says that we can have that third reading tonight, if that one passes, then we'll move on to having third reading. So we have a motion to say that we're allowed to have the next motion. I'll call for the vote on having third reading. That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, I move that third reading be given to bylaw C-1260-34.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Let me take us on into our regular committee business. Counselor Redburn, I think you're still on the mic with the Community Living Committee from March 24th.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held March 24th, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like I could accurately capture the meeting? Must, I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counselor Redburn, you had some business rising, I think?
We did. Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council approve the request from the County of Grand Prairie and provide in writing consent for the county to acquire an interest in land owned by the Peace Area Writing for the Disabled Society Pards, Lot 1, Plan 9223240, located in the city of Grand Prairie. Provide a context for this motion, Mayor Given. The county has agreed to provide $1 million of interim financing to complete their new facility, which is in the county. Rather, the loan is to be secured with the land located that they have presently within the city of Grand Prairie. According to the Municipal Government Act, Section 72A, a municipality cannot acquire an interest in lands located within another municipal jurisdiction without written consent of that municipal council. Therefore, that, that recommendation, that motion provides that to them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? As I noted at the committee meeting, and this is one of those examples of where the current system of local government and local governance is a bit of a challenge, with one municipality having to ask for permission to have something in another municipality, both trying to serve the same organization, which benefits both residents in both areas, so. Seeing no other discussion or debate, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Redburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given, just some other, I guess, items on the agenda or highlights. The Grand Prairie Disc Golf Club, the Catholic Family Services, and Kool-Aid Society all provided presentations through delegations and gave us updates in terms of the work of their particular organization. We received a letter from the county expressing an interest to discuss regional public transit services. Committee directed the transit manager to contact the county to begin those discussions. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. We'll move on to 9.2, the Community Safety Committee meeting. Counselor McLean, I think that one was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held March 31st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like we got it all right? Must. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move council award T-18-552-15-2015 crushing program to Bear City Enterprise Limited in the amount of $750,000, exclusive GST, as the lowest bidder meeting city specs.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Just note, for the interest of our public that's here, this is to crush old concrete that the city has pulled up, so whether it's sidewalks or curbs, the city actually goes through on a regular basis and crushes that down to smaller material that we can reuse in different city projects across, across our community. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move council award RFP-18-552-15-2015, 2016, road rehabilitation, road overlay, road resurfacing, and crack repair to Bearstone Association Engineering Limited in the amount of $879,181.77. Exclusive GST is the highest evaluated, proponent.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation for that RFP award? Seeing, seeing, seeing nothing other than trying to round up or round down, I guess. I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
One last one, thank you, Mayor Given. I move to council approve the purchase of a new patrol vehicle for enforcement services, estimated cost of $40,000 inclusive of GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, anything else you want to highlight from that meeting?
That pretty well covers everything.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Let me take us on to 9.3. Counselor Logan, I think you've got a number of motions coming out of your committee meeting. Now, care to start?
Finally busy. Move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting of March 31st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on those minutes as presented? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
First item of business is the 2015 supplementary property assessment. That's bylaw C-1318, I'd like to move first reading of that bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Motion for first reading, I'll call for the vote. I'm looking for one more vote, Counselor, thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, I would move second reading of the bylaw C-11318.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Just note, Counselor Logan, that you've got the jug of water there, I think you've got five different motions that each need at least three readings, maybe four apiece, so hopefully, you're well hydrated. Any discussion or debate on second reading of the 2015 supplementary property assessment bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you, that motion carries. Counselor Rice?
Obviously, there is some concern with the tabling of the provincial budget, particularly as it relates to the province no longer providing grants in lieu of taxes on seniors' apartments. How is this going to affect our budgets?
Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, next week, we will be bringing the property tax bylaw to the Corporate Services Committee in its Services Committee, and it's incorporated in there.
Okay, so it, it won't affect what we're doing tonight?
No, it won't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson. Uh, Councilor Logan, would you care to make a motion to have third reading?
That, uh, we have third reading of, uh, bylaw C one-three-one-eight.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So as with that previous one, this is another motion to have the third and final reading here tonight. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, uh, then this would come back at another council meeting, and we've got, uh, a number of motions, uh, number of the agenda items from here on out are like that. So a motion to have third and final reading, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, so we can have third reading. Councilor Logan?
Yes, I'd move, uh, third reading of the bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Uh, so, motion for third reading, open for discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, move on to, uh, supplementary, uh, property tax bylaw C dash one-three-one-nine, and, uh, I'd like to, uh, move through, uh, first reading.
Thanks very much. So no, no discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Redburn, do you have something?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just to give, uh, Councilor Logan a break at some point, maybe we could have, um, Mr. Anderson, uh, for the benefit of our students in the audience, kind of what we're doing.
Okay. Sure.
That'd be in order?
We have, we have two that have to do with supplementary property tax, and maybe, Mr. Anderson, if you could explain the difference between the, uh, first one and the second one?
Sure. Mayor Given, the first one was to assess property improvements that began in two thousand and fifteen and complete in two thousand and fifteen. That was the first bylaw you just passed. The one we're doing now actually imposes the tax on that assessment.
Thanks very much. Uh, thanks for the suggestion, Councilor Redburn. We do have a bunch of these, and it's hard to tell the difference if you haven't done it a million times. Councilor Logan, uh, would you like to make a motion, uh, on second reading?
Uh, uh, consider supplementary property tax bylaw C one-three-one-nine.
Okay. Thanks very much. That motion for second reading? Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Thanks very much. Um, before I hand it back, Councilor Logan, I'd also just note, uh, for the benefit of our viewers and the people in attendance, these are things that council has to do every year at this time before we set up the property taxes. So, uh, sort of routine business, but it is a requirement of, uh, legislation that says how cities operate, that we have to pass these motions and pass these bylaws every year. Councilor Logan, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I would move that we have third reading of bylaw, property tax bylaw C one-three-one-nine.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Any discussion or debate on having third reading? I believe we're on one-nine. Still on? We have thirteen-one-nine. Okay. Off the vote on having third reading. So I'm looking for one more vote. Thank you. That motion carries unanimously, so we can indeed have third reading, Councilor Logan.
I would move, uh, third reading of bylaw C one-three-one-nine.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Any discussion or debate on by, uh, on third reading of that, uh, supplementary property tax bylaw? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
Yes, the next item of business is, uh, Business Tax Assessment, bylaw C one-three-one-five, and I would, uh, give, uh, first reading to that bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. We're on, uh, nine point...
Three point three, aren't we?
Nine point three point three. Okay. Uh, thanks very much. Any dis, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? I'll call for the vote. Thank you.
Uh, I would move second reading of, uh, bylaw C one-three-one-five, as per Schedule One.
Thanks very much. Mr. Anderson, can you just clarify what, uh, bylaw C thirteen fifteen does?
Mayor Given, it sets the methodology for the assessment of the property residing in the business revitalization zone downtown.
So this is how to assess the items in that area?
Correct. The second one establishes that we can have a tax, and the third one sets the rate.
Okay. 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 Uh, so, Councilor Logan, you've moved to have second reading?
Yes, I would move second reading of bylaw C thirteen fifteen.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Logan?
I would move we have third reading of bylaw C thirteen fifteen.
Okay. Another one to motion to have third reading here tonight. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third reading? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan, we can have the reading?
Thank you. I would move third reading of bylaw C thirteen fifteen.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Councilor Logan, I don't know if your throat's getting dry, mine's getting dry having to ask all these questions. Uh, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. This just might be out of, of realm here a little bit, but I just, uh, we know this council's done a lot for planning for downtown, and, um, I don't know about immediately this year, but when we start road digging up and infrastructure, maybe something might be looked at for the business tax assessment down the road. But anyways, it's, okay, I just throwing that out there.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Uh, so a motion for third and final reading, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Let it take us to nine point three point four, Downtown BRZ Business Tax. I see Councilor Rice.
Declare a conflict of interest for nine point three point four and nine point three point five, is that's my employer?
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. So Councilor Rice will declare a conflict of interest for this item and the next one. Uh, she's employed by the Downtown BRZ Association. She'll leave council chambers, and, uh, Counselor O'Toole?
Can I just be excused for the room for just a minute or so?
Sure. Um, sure. Thank you. Counselor Logan?
Uh, uh, first reading of bylaw C thirteen sixteen.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So a motion on bylaw C thirteen sixteen. Uh, Mr. Anderson already gave us an introduction and the difference between the three items dealing with the downtown area. Any discussion or, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading? Excuse me? Start the vote. Five of us? That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
I would move, uh, second reading of bylaw C thirteen sixteen.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Motion for second reading, open for discussion or debate? Any discussion or debate on second reading? Uh, I just note that the, uh, business tax, uh, and the business tax rate are related to the Downtown Association budget, which has been circulated to the Downtown Association members and reviewed at the association's annual AGM. Uh, so, uh, we are essentially approving the, uh, the things that the Downtown Association members have seen facilitating their budget. So with that, I'll call for the vote on second reading? Yeah. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
Yes, I would move we have third reading of bylaw C thirteen sixteen.
Okay. Again, a motion to have third and final reading here tonight. I'll call for the vote on, sorry, is there any discussion or debate on having third and final reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
And finally, I'd move third reading of, uh, the bylaw.
Thank you very much. So a third reading of bylaw C thirteen sixteen, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Excuse me. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan, you're not off the, off the hook yet.
Thank you. One, one more to go here. Uh, move first reading of, uh, uh, bylaw C thirteen seventeen regarding the Downtown BRZ Business Tax Rate.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. A motion for first reading, there's no discussion or debate? I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan?
I would move second reading of bylaws, uh, C thirteen seventeen.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Logan, and, uh, thank you for providing some excitement. Counselor Tarrant? Discussion or debate?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Break up the monotony a little bit here. Uh, I thought, uh, council and maybe the public would be interested to know, we, at the, uh, Corporate Services Committee, we had, uh, uh, we were informed by the Assessment Department that there was, uh, there being, there lobbying for the Municipal Government Act to change so that, uh, we don't have to go through this complicated process every time that there, there is this, um, they're arguing for a simpler or streamlined approach, and so that we don't have to do this every year and go through the, uh, dozens of motions that we have to do. So I was excited to hear that, and I thought perhaps others would be, uh, maybe excited to hear that as well.
That also provides a good intermission. Thank you. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and thanks, uh, Counselor Tarrant for that, as well as Downtown Association does an awful lot, the Santa Claus Parade, Candidate Parade, organization, and all the flowers down there, everything you see, the Downtown Association is a part of that comes over the phone.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Uh, Councilor Logan, you had given us second reading. Thank you very much. I'll call for the vote on second reading. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Logan? Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So again, a motion to have third and final reading here tonight. Again, that motion must pass unanimously. Any discussion or debate on having third and final reading? Seeing nobody, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Councilor Logan?
And I would move third reading of bylaw C thirteen seventeen.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. So, any call for any discussion or debate on third and final reading of that third and final bylaw? Uh, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, I believe that handles all of our items that were related to the Downtown BRZ. If we could let Counselor Rice know, uh, wherever she is, that she could come back into council chambers. Where she appears. While we're doing that, Councilor Logan, I believe, uh, item nine point three point six had been dealt with earlier in the agenda. Do you want to give us any other, was there any other business from that committee that we didn't cover in full of your motions?
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I think that completes all of the business.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Uh, so we moved to item nine point four, which was our, uh, agenda item that was added here tonight. That was, uh, recommendation for appointments to the Aquaterra Board of Directors. Um, could I have a motion on that? Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council direct the mayor vote to city's shares in support of the Aquaterra Board appointments as recorded.
That's recommended. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
List the names.
I think Counselor Rice typically, the appointments, uh, actually don't take an effect.
From Aquaterra?
Yeah. The Aquaterra shareholders will...
Oh, okay. Thanks.
And, uh, I appreciate the motion. We've sort of established a process of council telling the mayor what to do with the shares, rather than the mayor just deciding, or appearing to just decide on their own. Hey, thanks very much, uh, Counselor O'Toole. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. With one opposed, uh, we'll move on to, uh, items of correspondence. Council will see in your agenda package, we had a letter from Special Olympics Alberta Board of Directors, uh, very congratulatory towards the organizing committee of the two thousand and fifteen Alberta Special Olympics, uh, that were hosted here in Grand Prairie. Uh, really appreciate the board recognizing the good work of our Grand Prairie volunteers. Counselor Rice?
I move that we received the thank you letter from the Special Olympics Alberta Direct, Board of Directors for information and in speaking to it, and of course, I think it's even more special with the appearance at our last council meeting of Katie, who came forward to tell us how well she had done in the Special Olympics.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So a motion to receive that letter for information, any discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Um, we had one delegation tonight, but I believe that their business was, uh, addressed with one of the items on our agenda. Uh, and we have, uh, our notice of motion, which of course was moved to earlier in the agenda as well. So I think that takes us to council member roundtable, uh, or sorry, council member reports, and we'll start with Counselor Rice in a report from the AUMA.
I was, um, part of the Municipal Government Act Review Committee. We managed to get Bill twenty tabled in the legislature, um, which includes several items of amendments to the Municipal Government Act. Um, the items, uh, are, are somewhat vague to some people, but we are now in the process of writing the regulations, which will be tabled in the fall, uh, by the fall sitting. Um, we hope to have the majority of the fifty-four items, and, and of course, I guess you could say the first go-round was the low-hanging fruit. Uh, now we're getting into the, the really tough stuff, so, uh, uh, an exciting process, but one that I'm confident is moving ahead quite efficiently. And I attended at the legislature. I'll just say another thing on the MJ that was tabled. Um, when the regs are written, there will be a requirement for the city to change at least one of their bylaws. There will be no BRZs anymore. They will be known as B, uh, Business Improvement Areas. That was one of the changes. Attended at the legislature when the provincial govern, uh, budget was tendered, it was good news as it related to MSI. While we really hoped that the four hundred million that came earlier in the month was new money, we rather suspected that we would be reduced, uh, in the MSI funding promised, but reduced, and with the four hundred million added, we wouldn't fall behind. As a matter of fact, we ended up about twenty-five million dollars ahead, uh, so that's not too bad of news. The bad news came in Albert Urban Municipalities Association has a special executive meeting, which will be taking place this week to deal, um, particularly with two emergent items that somehow were buried in the, I say buried in the budget, but those have to do with, uh, the impact on municipalities of the province eliminating the grants in lieu of taxes on seniors' apartments. So, um, the substantial hit for, with Grand Prairie and other municipalities. Um, and obviously, uh, all the municipalities want more answers like such. Does it affect the two thousand and fifteen before the mill rate is set? That could have a, a big effect on some budgets. The other source of concern that's emerging is the capping of the school enrollments. The other source of concern that's emerging is the capping of the school enrollments. So that for a growing community like Grand Prairie, this could create real pressures for us. So the AUMA executive will be dealing with those as well as alert. The response team, which has had a fantastic track record. It doesn't produce warm and fuzzies, and so I think it behoves the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association to make sure that's something that doesn't get lost in the shuffle because it certainly is a benefit to all municipalities. So we'll be dealing with those and other emergent issues as they come forward.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Thanks for your work at AUMA. It's a challenge for municipalities even the size of Grand Prairie to discern all the different impacts of the provincial budget. And I know for municipalities smaller than the city of Grand Prairie, obviously, double E is hard. So, appreciate the work that AUMA does to distill that for its members. Move to Downtown BRZ. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick report. I attended the Downtown BRZ Board Meeting on April 1st. Topics discussed included Rotary House Good Neighbor Agreement, snow removal on city-owned lands downtown, sidewalk maintenance and repairs, alley and tree gate repairs, tour of Alberta Route and road closure, sign by law review, downtown apartment by law change, and downtown parking, future park age. It was a good meeting and a lot of, covered a lot of ground.
Thank you. Thanks very much for the update, Counselor Radburn. I don't think any other council members had any reports from external agencies, boards, and commissions. Oh, Counselor Rice?
Counselor Radburn, subsequent, we've discovered that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM Rotary House will be signing a Good Neighbor Agreement with, I think it's 14 other community organizations in how they want to ensure that their clients are good neighbors. So, I think that's a rather exciting step forward. Sorry.
No, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. And certainly, I think the city of Grand Prairie is one of those signatories as well, and it is exciting to see the organization take that step. Counselor Logan, would you care to start our roundtable?
Yes, and I can start it really easily. I have nothing to report.
Well, there you go. That's a good reason to start there, I guess. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just two things to speak of. I was just getting over, we had a pretty good flu going around the last couple of weeks, and I was one of them involved in it. The one I-
Did you cause it?
No, my children. So, I was just going to say I was at the groundbreaking as other councillors when they did the groundbreaking, but we were at the official opening, where Mayor Given and Wayne Drysdale and other councillors were there as well. Charles Spencer High School. I was very proud to be there. I know a few students there, and I remember telling them I was not inside of the new building, and they were kind of giving me heck. And so actually, one of them seen me there and gave me a high five, and I was really proud of it. It's a beautiful facility. Warmer weather, and when the groundbreaking, it was a shovel of snow. It wasn't even in the ground. It was cold. And they should be very proud of it. I think their name is Maverick. And changing things and reaching out there and trying to make your community better. I think it's, they should be very proud for many, many years. And I always wondered what was behind the big glass in front of it, and it's the library. So, you get actually there and see it. It is a beautiful building. And I'm just going to move on. Another thing I want to say is to Counselor Rice, I just want to say how proud I am, and that you are the president of AUMA. You make us proud every day. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Radburn?
Just kidding. I'd like to highlight a couple of items from my roundtable. One is I attended on behalf of council the Grand Prairie Public Schools Aboriginal Youth Entrepreneurship Program Celebration. It's a program at the Compost High School. It's just, as it's stated, it's two blocks a week they're involved in developing their entrepreneurship skills. And it's in a great connection with the students there, and it's, for first year, it's done very well. And secondly, along with Counselor Logan, I attended the Good Neighbor Recognition at the Grand Prairie Fire Department. There was some mention of it in the paper, where the Cal U family, their son and mom and dad all helped. The son noticed the, and told the mom. The mom called 911. The dad went back and helped the son with a little bit of pre-work before the department came to the rescue, so to speak. And property and other damage was certainly limited as a result of their good, good work. The other part of that that just struck, struck me was the mother of the house that had the fire was there, and she was quite emotional and quite displeased, very thankful for the family, for their great neighbor, neighbor actions. So it was a good, and I think it's good that Grand Prairie Fire Department, as from time to time, does that on a regular basis, recognizes community members who have helped us provide that quality service, so good on the department as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Ever. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There's just one event I wanted to note this week. The mayor and I were at the grand opening for the Curves Downtown location. And I just want to say it was kudos to Curves for opening. It's great to see businesses investing in our downtown and providing, you know, the activity there, and so it was fantastic to see, and kudos for the grand opening.
Counselor Ever. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a couple of things. I've been pretty busy the last couple of weeks, but on the 25th, it was a Wednesday, Nighthawk Ski, I'm not going to call it the ski resort, but the Nighthawk Ski Hill, had a sponsor appreciation, and there was a number of activities that were out there. And there was spaghetti supper for those that were to show up. And also, last Thursday, the weekend, or just before the weekend started, I was down here opening tenders and some of the tender, or overlay sidewalk program, road rehab, boiler and chimneys over at the CKC, and fresh air intake over here at the MCC. And I gotta let you know that there was a lot more interest in the tenders this year, and some of the pricing was a lot more livable with. So, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice? Last one around?
On one meeting with City Manager Sherbeck, and I'm sure that the fact that he didn't come to work for two days after that meant he had that flu. Just kidding. I want to make everyone aware that the 2015 Municipal Electronics and Paint Roundup Application Guide has been sent to all municipal chief administrative officers, so Greg will have received that as well as to the registered municipal collection sites. This is the 10th year of the roundup program, and it's open to all municipalities. And it provides an opportunity to receive funding for the promotion and staging of a roundup to collect end-of-life computer equipment, televisions, and leftover paint from residents. And business and applicants will also receive incentives for the material collected. So, Grand Prairie has had a very successful paint roundup for many years. Of all of the successful recycling initiatives in Alberta, the one ironically that's slowest to get off the ground is the electronics. It's just not seeing, showing the numbers that we had hoped. And huge education initiative is being planned for this year. People are afraid of privacy of thus, so there'll be a huge initiative in terms of dealing with those concerns, so. But there is an opportunity, and I'm sure we will take advantage of obtaining that funding.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. I'll just report on a couple of items that haven't been mentioned so far. On Monday, the 30th, I was invited to attend the St. Paul's United Church downtown. They have a number of their congregation members who get together on a regular basis and receive presentations from different organizations and entities in the community about what's going on in Grand Prairie. I was pleased to be invited and shared with them some of council's priorities for our community, in our strategic plan, and our vision for the downtown. Noting that they're very interested in the future downtown, being that they're right in the heart of it. One thing that was related to me is the challenge that they have around loud vehicles. Considering the rate on the corner as people head out of our downtown, they noted that with loud vehicles, it is sort of like the takeoff point and is a challenge for their congregation and for the community use of their facility too, so I encourage them to bring that forward to a future council or committee meeting. I also attended at the proclamation reading to proclaim Parkinson's Awareness Month. That was at the Grand Prairie Co-op and was hosted by the Grand Prairie Chapter of Parkinson's Alberta. And then on Thursday, the 2nd, I had an opportunity to meet with two county residents who are experiencing some challenges navigating the jurisdiction between the city and county with regard to the city's annexation area and the long-term annexation area, and their desires to move forward with development on their private lands. So it was a first for me to have, oh, sorry, first in recent time, I should say, with county residents in the mayor's office, seeking to speak to this, seeking to speak to the city about how they navigate that system. And so I just thought I'd relate that to council. With that, I hope everyone had a good Easter, and we'll call our meeting adjourned.